Good morning and welcome to the Board of Trustees meeting for St. Petersburg College. Today's April 21st at 9:00 a.m. Today is a regular business meeting of the Board and it is recorded and will be on the Board of Trustees website. Thank you to each of our Board members and Dr. Williams for attending virtually and thank you to the staff for being on as well to respond to questions and be available. So I did want to remind everybody that this is a public meeting. It's open to the public and if you want to provide public comment related to a matter of business, please type your intent to do so in your name in the chat box. I will see that appear and be able to call on you. So you can speak during the public comment portion of the Board meeting. So trustees in attendance today are Trustee Gibbons, Trustee Kidwell, Trustee Stone Cypher, Vice Chair Bello, and we have Dr. Williams with us as well as a number of others. So the Secretary to the Board Rebecca Turner is also in attendance and is making sure this is recorded properly. So with that, if I will call this meeting to order of the Board of Trustees of St. Petersburg College. And Mr. Stone Cypher, would you like to offer our invocation?
Absolutely.
We'll stay seated if that's okay.
Sure. Lord, we thank you for bringing us together here this morning in each of our separate homes and offices. We're so grateful for the opportunity we have with technology to continue working and doing the good things that are needed for our college, St. Petersburg College, for the students to go there, for those that work there. We pray for the health of those in our community and in our country. We ask that you would help us all get through this time. We thank you for the dedication of the work of the staff at St. Pete College to make sure that we can still operate with all the variables that are happening right now. We ask that you would help our students through the rest of the semester, that you would be with our leadership as we make tough decisions moving forward. In it's your name, we pray, amen.
Amen.
Thank you. And we do have a flag available to say the pledge, so I suppose with this we should stand up. So you all will join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America
and to the Republic
which stands one nation under God
and indivisible, liberty, justice for all. Thank you. And now moving on to SPC Spotlight, Dr. Williams.
Yes, we have a lot, but I'm not going to say everything. I'll have you here forever. But I do want to give a strong shout out to the SPC family. We were able to transition 1,800 courses in two days from face-to-face on campus to a face-to-face online, which is unheard of. Very proud of that. We didn't have to shut down for a whole week. They came back from spring break, took those two days and made it happen. We have given out or loaned or donated 26,000 pieces of medical equipment. We've loaned out 11 ventilators. And we've had two faculty members use 3D printers to make masks and things of that nature to support our healthcare workers and we donated 800 pounds of food. So I think that creating a community of care is exactly what we've done here at SPC. We've also raised over $190,000 to the foundation and the generosity of many of you who gave to the emergency fund to give funds to our students to help them during this difficult time. I was told yesterday that a community member just gave another $10,000 to the emergency fund. And so SPC has been giving money to students, not for tuition and books. This is for living and supporting them during this unprecedented time. Yesterday I had the honor of recognizing a facilities crew member who's been with the college 46 years. And we did a drive-by recognition. We had a lot of cars there blowing horns. I read his resolution, view of the foghorn, and we gave him his plaque using social distancing rules to recognize his hard work for 46 years. His name is Dave Houston. And so we're very proud of Dave and very happy for him and wish him well on his retirement. We've added two new short-term programs that will be starting this fall dealing with laboratory specialists. As you know, from the COVID-19 situation, a lot of new jobs are starting to be created. And we're trying to get ahead of that. And I'll be having some webinars with various clusters of members to find out from the healthcare community what new jobs are coming, how can we be prepared? For manufacturing and so forth. So we're learning new things, also event planning. With this work that's going on, there are new online events, new ways of doing things, not the same. So we're jumping on those certificate opportunities. Last week, we had hospitality. Members come to me to say, can we do some sort of sanitizing certificate? So that people will know how to sanitize facilities and what's the new, latest and greatest from FEMA on down. So we're moving forward on that. We have some upcoming town hall meetings that you guys will receive invitations to. We're having a student town hall meeting, 6 o'clock on the 22nd. The faculty at noon on the 23rd. Career staff, April 28th at 1:00. And we're doing one with donors, potential donors who want to help the college to talk about what our needs are. April 29th, and administrative and professional staff, May 1st. You're invited to join me on those town hall meetings so that you can really get the feel and questions from our students and our employees and our potential donors. I think it would be good to have Board members present to participate and be able to be a fly on the wall to hear what we're doing. And we're going to be celebrating when we get back. We received written confirmation, we are fully re-accredited for our associated nursing program and we're fully re-accredited in our respiratory program. So we received that information this week. So kudos to the deans and the faculty for their work on getting us re-accredited. A lot of groups were in the midst of being re-accredited and we're not sure where they're going to land. But nursing and respiratory, it's interesting that we got re-accredited in a time like this when they need more nurses and respiratory care therapists. And so those are my Spotlight information report today.
Wonderful, thank you. Any comments or questions from the Board? I don't, I think it's easiest, Trustee Gibbons? Trustee Kidwell?
Kid.
Trustee Stone Cypher?
Can we, Dr. Williams, can you just make sure that someone from the staff sends us the dates and times of those meetings again?
They will send you the actual invite to put in your calendar.
Great, thank you.
It will, it will come from Rebecca.
Okay.
Trustee Bello, any comment?
Yeah, I just want to share a couple of things that I've experienced outside of the college. As a member of the media, I get the press releases of all the things that are going on. And we've also done a lot of coverage on it, but I've been very, very proud to see the things that we've been doing behind the scenes. And I know you spotlighted just a few of them, but there's pages and pages every week of single-spaced types that we get in those releases. And it's just a time to be really proud to be a member of this Board. I had another thing real quickly that happened yesterday and you can't make this stuff up, right? So I was, United Way Suncoast reached out to me to ask me about a recommendation for a strategic planning session that they were working on. And of course, I said Collaborative Labs at SPC. I was talking to her at 1:00 and at 1:30, she, 1:33, she emailed me and said, they're already on it. She had already received an email from Collaborative Labs 33 minutes later after the phone call. So nobody has taken this time to Netflix and chill, for lack of a better way to put it. We're doing a good job of really staying out there and being members of the community. And I just wanted to recognize and say thank you.
Wonderful, thank you so much. And I think every day we're seeing on social media and through the news exactly how impactful St. Pete College has been locally in the community to support our small businesses, to support our community members, to support our students and our healthcare system. So we thank you, Dr. Williams, and your team and all the students for stepping up as they are. So with that, there's also public comment available today pursuant to Florida statutes. At this point, I have not seen anyone enter the chat room requesting public comment. I'll pause just a minute to give Rachel or PJ an opportunity to tell me otherwise. But I'm thinking we do not have any public comment. All right. With that, we will move on. We do have some, a few motions we need to approve the minutes and then do some other things. Because of this unique forum, what I'd ask you each to do is I'll call your name and we'll do a roll call vote. And then if you could both say your vote and raise your hand, if it's yay, that would be helpful for the record. So at this point, we have two minutes that we need to review, March 17th and March 24th, both of which were included in your packet that Rebecca distributed previously. Are there any comments with respect to the minutes or amendments to the minutes? With that, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve both minutes for the meeting on March 17th and March 24th.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. And all in favor, Ms. Bello?
Hi.
Mr. Gibbons?
Hi.
Mr. Kidwell?
Hi.
Mr. Stone Cypher?
Aye.
And I'm aye as well. Very good, thank you. We have no report from the General Counsel this morning. Dr. Williams and I talked about this this week, but the Strategic Plans Monthly Dashboard is included in your package. I wanted to draw it to your attention, but we weren't going to specifically look through it. We're all, we're in that kind of hybrid time period at the end of the semester leading into the summer term. We obviously have a reduction in enrollment at this point that we're anticipating and which is reflected within both the resource alignment as well as the retention and enrollment. Are there any specific questions anyone has with respect to the monthly dashboard?
I have a question. Do we give money from the stimulus package for our students and for enrollment? I know a couple of colleges got 17 and 19 million. And other universities got money. I was just wondering if we got anything out of federal stuff?
Thank you, Trustee Gibbons. Yes, we did. We received about 12.8 million. And we will be talking about that at the end of the, later in the meeting to share where we are and to receive your feedback.
The consent agenda was also distributed and there are a number of items, both old business, there were none, but new business. There's administrative matters, curriculum changes, grants and funds, and policy changes, change order for Seminole Chamber of Commerce and a funding transfer request, which is the annual transfer for our health insurance fund. Does anyone have questions or comments or wish to pull any of those items off of the consent agenda?
I have a quick question. Can someone remind me of what the transfer was last year for the health fund? I couldn't find it. And I know we discussed it.
Yeah, I think for us to make safe harbor last year, it was about 2 million. It was a lot.
And we were anticipating that this year would be significantly less, which it looks like it is.
Correct. And we are anticipating this year's to be very high because of COVID and people are starting to check themselves a lot more. And so we are looking at joining the consortium. We're also looking at other insurance policies. And we have one for the rest of this year and may have to look at some changes there. So we'll be bringing that back before the recommendation is made. I think, Trustee Gibbons, you've talked to us a couple of times about people having options. And so before making those decisions, we're, we're bringing all of those forward. Or we're pulling everything so we can bring them forward before anything is done.
Trustee Stone Cypher, Ms. Hunt provided a
I can't hear you, Trustee Gibbons.
I saw that, Mr. Gibbons, thank you.
Okay, it was 3.5. I know it was high.
Yeah.
Yeah. It was expensive.
If you all recall, and for Mr. Kidwell's benefit, we had a work session, a pretty extensive work session to review all of the insurance options. And the Board chose kind of the middle, middle number, which was not a significant cut to our employees and staff, but still was a reduction in coverage or an increase in employee participation from what we had provided in the past. And so Dr. Williams and I, in light of kind of the financial situation moving in to the next two years and in light of continuing to have to transfer money for safe harbor, I asked her if we could take another look at that and see what else we needed to do, which is why she had already said they were going to look at the consortium. So I, we're, if we need to, we'll have another workshop on that, like we did last year or 18 months ago. Any other questions with respect to the consent agenda? If there are none, I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda in total.
I move to approve the consent agenda in whole.
Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Bello. And we'll do a roll call vote, Ms. Bello?
Hi.
Mr. Gibbons?
Hi.
Mr. Kidwell?
Aye.
Mr. Stone Cypher?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Thank you very much. And we have a number of informational reports that were included in your packet, including purchasing information and such. And then, Dr. Williams, I know you had a President's Report to give an update with respect to. Dr. Williams, you're still muted. Thank you.
Sorry about that, thank you. We've been chomping at the bits as we look at what's going on with COVID-19. So we're going to start with Trustee Gibbons' question about the CARES Act. SPC received 12.8 million dollars. We have not received all of it. We just received the funds 6.4 million for students. And this money, we've been given a whole year to spend. And so we're looking at breaking this up into maybe thirds or in half, not just spending all of it at once, to provide aid directly to students, which is what the funds were intended to do. Our semester ends very quickly. And so looking at the students who are here right now who are struggling, those who will be here in the summer who are struggling, and then the fall. And so trying to divide this up to make it equitable with the work that the foundation has done to provide resources to students, whether they're pail recipients or not, has been amazing. We've been able to help about 300 students. We have about 500 on a waitlist waiting to be supported. So this money came in last night, we'll be able to pull it today and we'll be able to start distributing those funds to the students directly. We don't know when we're going to get the institutional money and it's unclear as to exactly how those funds can be used and what they're allowed for. We're attending a lot of the conferences, the federal workshops to help us on how these funds can be spent. And as soon as we get those, we'll, we'll let you guys know where we are with the institutional half. But we just received last night 6.4 million for the students. You're on mute, Katie.
Saying that was wonderful. Are there any questions about that for Dr. Williams? Very good. Any other updates, Dr. Williams?
Yes, we talked about the town hall meetings, but we really need to be working hard on what our next steps are for returning back to campus and what will be our priorities budget-wise? Because this is going to be totally different than a recession. This is not a recession. This is going to be closer to a depression for a little bit. And we need to be prepared for that. In recession times, we get more enrollment. This is a little bit different. Right now, our summer enrollment is down 6.8%. And so we're going to be pulling that data to provide to the Board. How much does this mean in dollars? If you recall, for the 1920 year, we budgeted to be flat in our enrollment. So we distributed funds to operate the college based on having the exact same enrollment in 1920 as we did in 1819. And we have missed the mark in each semester. We were down a little bit in the fall, down, down in the spring. And with COVID, we're down in the summer. And we anticipate not meeting our enrollment targets for the fall. So what we had talked about was adjusting our spending and focusing on the high-impact areas. To do that, we need to plan scenarios. We need to say, if the enrollment is 5% down, here's what we're going to do. If it's 10%, here's, if it's 20%, here's what we're going to do. So we can be prepared. So we're starting to have those conversations and looking at data. Right now, we still do not have a clue on where we are with the state budget. And so that also carries a big, it's a big price tag for us to know where we are so we can move forward. So we're getting ready for our scenario building. We've already had some discussions on that. If we're down a certain percent, what will we do? We're looking at three different cases. The best case, medium case, the worst-case scenarios. My priority from day one has been to keep teaching going. Make sure that learning is continuous, that we don't stop. That's why we did the online immediately. Second was priority for the employees, to keep people employed. We are the, you know, engine for workforce and we can't just let our own people go. So we have come up with alternative plans and ideas to remain committed to our employees that we have. And we'll continue to be committed to those employees as, as long as we can with, with the resources that we have. All of our colleges are still facing uncertainty. Many have already started laying people off. We have not started that. We're looking at how can we retrofit roles? What can we do to keep people on board, give them alternate roles and things to do to move forward? Right now in higher ed, we need more analysts, people who can do more predictive work and things of that nature. And so we're looking at how can we massage things and move people over and across? And so once we get our three scenarios together, we'll make sure we bring back to the Board, if we're 5% down, here's where we're going to go. If we're 10%, here's where we're going to go, et cetera. We're also bringing back to you those programs and focuses that we have that are not frugal. That's just, it's not fruitful, it's not working for us. And saying, these are the things that we're going to have to let go and these are the things we're going to have to amp up. And we know that in healthcare, we're going to have to amp up, but healthcare programs don't bring a lot of revenue. So, so we'll have to look at how we can continue to be supportive to our workforce community as well as the people that we have. So a couple of things that we are doing. For the fall, we've already planned to return on campus. The date that we originally had in the syllabus, in the curriculum and how we're working. The calendar is the same for fall, unless the governor or someone else says, no, it's not a good time. That's what we're aiming for. We're aiming to have classes on campus, but not in the same way that we've had them before. Practicing social distancing, we're going to have to do things a little bit different where classes are blended face-to-face and on campus. So we don't have 40 students in the class at one time, but may have 10 and the professor. And so we're looking at unique ways of doing the work that we've done and being more laser-focused on how to get through these changes. But we'll never go back to the way we were. Higher ed, our world has forever been changed and I think you all would agree on that. We've been able to get a lot done through the technology platforms. It's been, it's been amazing and it's been scary all at the same time. If we're not back on campus in August as planned, then we will pursue the online face-to-face platform as, again, as our main platform. We're actually putting our courses in the platform online, planning to be on campus. So we're planning for both scenarios. And I don't know if you want me to stop there and, and give me your feedback on what you've heard so far and your questions.
Anyone? Personally, I think the college has been a leader, the education system generally, K through 12 and the college has been a leader in the situation of transitioning to this virtual platform. And it's just been amazing to me how the leadership that you've shown and our professors and everyone else, really trying to keep the ball moving forward and not coming to a full stop. I wish that some of our other government agencies and would have taken the lead of the education system because it really has been amazing. We do have a question on chat. Dr. Williams, do you see that? Oh, yep, Ms. Bello?
Has there been any talk about testing, onsite testing?
I can't hear you.
Has there been any discussion about onsite testing?
For COVID? Yes, we, the Sheriff's Department called to see if we would serve as onsite testing site if we'd like. But as far as students and employees coming back and having onsite testing for them, we had some discussions on that and what the cost would be to do that.
There's a question that was posted with respect to blended classes being switched remote learning to Zoom because the cost of having on-campus classes at only 10 people per class is a pretty low breakeven financially. And so what is the discussion involving that?
I agree on the blended format. We've been doing that for a long time. I think many of our faculty will find themselves switching over to a Zoom-like face-to-face because a student can see the instructor and the instructor can see the student. We're going to have to have a lot of discussion about what we do with on-campus classes and social distancing. A lot of colleges are trying to figure out, where do we go from here and do we remain online more than bringing folks back? If our students were on the phone, many of them would say, we want to come back on campus, especially those who chose on-campus classes. And so those are some of the things that we'll have to look at as we prioritize what we do. And that's why I think the student forum is going to be so helpful. And we're looking at trying to do that like quarterly to hear from students. You know, the, the employees and the faculty hear from them daily. But to, to have us come together with students, we would be able to do that about four or five times a year.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I know there's a lot of discussions centered around this, but I don't want to start talking about this too early. The Governor's Office is going to give out directives related to what they expect community colleges and universities to do in terms of classes coming soon. Probably before July 1st, June 1st, the legislature is going back in to look at the budget. And they're going to look at universities and colleges on how we will move forward in terms of providing quality education.
We've been on the calls with those conversations, some of the things that I'm Some of the things that I'm sharing is a part of that discussion that, that we've had with the commissioner and others. They have some special groups and the state colleges are represented on those groups to bring forward the high-impact changes that the colleges are doing. And so trustee Gibbons is right on and I'm glad that we're all being brought up, brought up to speed and included. And he's correct.
I just don't want us to start having discussions because as most of you know, when the legislature makes a rule, there's nothing anybody can do, the governor or the commissioner of education, we have to follow that. The legislature is the body that sets the guidelines for how we actually move forward. When the legislature does something, we have to follow those guidelines and rules. So I would wait until June, they'll have the discussions, but I would just wait until the June 1st legislative body to see how they deal with. I know they're going to be dealing with hospitals and nursing homes, but I know that patient is not, it's not already for them because it is an economic engine in Florida. We have so many students that come from outside of the state. From the Florida school, and that has been one of the major discussions that they've been having. So I'm sure that they will deal with that and they're going to give us guidelines on how they would like us to move forward with students in, in face-to-face classes and as well as virtual.
Well, I guess you're, you're absolutely right and they're asking us, what do we think? And again, it doesn't necessarily matter. You're right about that, that they'll make that final decision. And so we'll chug along on preparing and then adjust accordingly. You're right. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Any other comments or questions for the good of the order before we adjourn?
I do have one more comment, Madam Chair. You know, we talked about all of the great things that have happened with COVID-19. There are some things that we learned that aren't going so well, that we're working on as a college with operations and some of the systems that we have. And so you'll see us coming forward with recommendations on improving those areas. Because they're, you know, you learn a lot and never waste a good crises. And so we've learned a lot in this process on what's going well and what's not going so well.
Thank you.
So we'll be sharing that.
Always important.
Yep. And that is it?
We're currently scheduled for a May 12 Zoom meeting. Most of the, so we will continue to keep you updated on that. We are getting to the point where we're going to have to make some more decisions for fall terms. And so we'll keep the agenda light with action only that we need to take to keep things moving forward. But please know if there's anything specific that you all would like an update on or want specific information, I think it would be helpful to have that as a group forum. As Mr. Gibbons said, as the summer moves forward, the legislature is going to be making some changes. We need to be continuing to plan and guesstimate what those changes are going to be and get our house in order too, which is what Dr. Williams and her team has been doing. So it's all going to be kind of happening in real time here, coming, starting in May through the summer. So please reach out, ask questions. Dr. Williams is great about making sure your questions go on her master list. And when she and I talk, she communicates, you know, that what one of you have asked to be discussed at a meeting as well. So the only other thing I'd ask is each of you have your own roles with our direct service organizations. Those meetings have been put on hold. The foundation annual meeting was last week. But otherwise, if you wouldn't mind just taking a moment to reach out, to touch base with those directors and executive directors and just see how those things are going and, and just keep that communication open. I think it's also important, so.
Our foundation, our foundation did such a good job in the meeting last week. I don't know, I think trustee Stonecypher may have left, but have been very supportive and moving in the right direction. They're looking forward to continuing to build their relationship with you. And mentioned it specifically in the meeting. And they voted unanimously to support us moving forward with lobbying firm that, that went through and providing some other support for the college. So kudos to the foundation.
Very good. And I would be remiss as I'm listening to my children in the background ask my husband questions about their schoolwork today. I know we've continued to talk about our instructors and being appreciative of them and their transition to online teaching. But I would like to recognize all of our staff and administration because people are doing double work at home. And Ms. Turner and I were talking on this Zoom call about her working with her son at home. And there's a lot of professors and instructors who are not only teaching their classes, but proctoring their own children's classes. And everybody's getting used to a new normal of productivity. And I just, I can't say thank you enough for keeping the ball moving forward. So with that, I will adjourn and thank you all so much and have a great Tuesday on this beautiful day. Thank you.
Thank you. Bye.
Bye.
Bye. Stay safe, all.
Be safe.
Yes.